This virtual meeting, the planning board of the Borough of Flemington, our regular Tuesday, August 24th, 2021 meeting. This virtual meeting is called pursuant to the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act. Both adequate and electronic notice of this virtual meeting has been provided by way of publication in the Courier-News newspaper on or about August 6, 2021. In addition, notice of the meeting was posted on the door of Borough Flemington Municipal Building, located at 38 Park Avenue. And any handicap accessible entrances there too, posted on the municipal website, provided to the municipal clerk and distributed to all persons, if any requesting copies of the same. The meeting is being recorded with both audio and video and may be rebroadcast. This meeting is a judicial proceeding and any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision. And decorum appropriate through judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Let's get everyone pleased to rise for the flag salute.
Flag your agents into the flag of the United States of America.
Eileen, please call the roll.
Mayor Driver is excused. Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Campion?
Here.
Mr. Daschner?
Here.
Mrs. Engelhardt?
Here.
Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. Budney?
Here.
Mr. Hane?
Here.
Ms. Giffen?
Yeah.
Mr. Hill?
Here.
Mr. Norton?
Here.
Mr. Levitt?
Here.
Ms. Weitzman is excused. Ms. Kozinski?
Here.
And Mr. Clerico, Ms. McManus, and Mr. Troutman are all excused.
You know, it's a good meeting when everyone's excused, the professionals are excused. But I'm not going to say why, because when I do that, it doesn't work out. So, item number one on the agenda as always, period for public comments. Eileen, did we get anything at Borough Hall through mailbox or voicemail?
No, we did not.
Any members of the public who are attending virtually wish to make a comment on an item not currently on the agenda, please click the raise hand button on the Zoom interface. If you're on the phone, you can hit star nine to raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on to item two on the agenda. The mayor is not here and did not give me any comments, so we'll move on to item three. Council comments, Mr. Long.
Hi, good evening, folks. So I had two things to report. Last night at council, we approved a couple of resolutions. I'll just fill you in. We approved Resolution 2021-174, asking the board to review a rezoning request. We had, excuse me?
Yeah, and these were all sent out to everybody by email later in the day. We're going to talk about how we're handling the rezoning requests under chair items, but Jer, I just want just, so we'll have some discussion a little bit later.
Yeah, so we had a request to review from a property owner. And just a zoning for a different use. And the council just is passing this along for you, the board to review. So we passed that last night and we also approved Resolution 2021-174. I'm sorry, I think I mixed up my numbers, I'm sorry, 175. That was to authorize the submission of a grant application for the master plan. And that is obviously something I have my note right here. There, sorry. I'm at my wife's makeup table and it's very cramped here, so. This is just for, just for the public. We all know this, but the most recent master plan was adopted in 2010 and there was a reissue in 2015. It's now time to update it, to reflect current changes and new regulations. So, we approve that for submission of an application to the Hunter County Economic Development Grant Program. And that is it for me.
Right, and just for the members of the board, council needed to pass a resolution giving permission to write a letter to Hunter County Economic Development to ask for money to pay for part of the master plan work. So that's why they've required a resolution and that is going to move forward this week. The letter, they have a budget updated from Kyle McManus and that is moving forward, so.
Was the grant for a specific amount or?
Asked yet. So, we, to be honest, we're going to ask for as much as 20,000. We don't think we're going to get 20,000, but we're going to ask for that. Hopefully to cover, you know, there's direct stuff in the master plan work that's directly tied to their funding priorities for economic development in county seat. But we're going to make the argument that there's more than just the economic plan elements piece, but there's other pieces that are kind of the logical extension of what they've already funded for the Opportunity Zone Grant and the current study that's going on now, you know, involving properties in town. So, so we're going to ask, we're going to ask for a lot and we're going to see what we can get. But I, I don't want to put a price tag on it, but we'll get less, we'll get, we're going to get something, we're going to get less than 20.
And just so that it's clear, 20,000 isn't the entire budget that's needed for the master plan, which if you recall, we discussed a while back. So, what the council did yesterday was basically to help us out and to, you know, to help fund part of the master plan, but it doesn't apply to everything.
Yeah, and then there's also, and there is money in the council budget for the master.
Of course.
So that's, but the council wanted us to ask the county first, which is fair. And we're going to take care of that now that they've acted. So those are the two things there. Any questions for Councilman Long?
Are we going to be discussing the rezoning request? Okay, then I'll hold my comments till then.
Okay, great, thank you, Jeremy. HPC comments, I do not see the chair of the HPC, but everyone should have gotten earlier in the week, three resolutions from HPC, 28 Pennsylvania Avenue, 52 Broad Street and 14 Capener, I think it was either 14 or 19, I can't read my own handwriting, Capener Street, somewhere in the teens. And all those were approvals, there was some discussion, it appears, the one for 28 Pennsylvania, but it seems like it's been resolved. And I don't think that requires any further discussion, I don't see any of the property owners here either, so we can move on.
One of the property owners picked the same color blue that I picked for my shutter, so I like that one.
There you go. Item five on the agenda is approval of our minutes from our July 27th, 2021 meeting. Those have been previously distributed. If anyone has, let me get a motion in a second on the minutes.
I'm sorry, that would be the August 10th, not July 1st.
Sorry, it said, you know what, it said, it says, well, at the top of what I just printed out, it said.
July 27th.
27, so here's one fix, we have to fix the date on the top of the minutes to say 10th.
I will certainly do that, sorry about that.
Oh, that's, I missed it too. Can I get a motion in a second?
Sure, so move Cook.
Second, Hane.
Okay, so other than the date change on the header, anybody have any other questions, discussion, Cara, please?
Under item eight, where we talk about the completeness for Captiva, that last sentence, I think we're missing the word incomplete after application and before tonight. So it should redeeming the application incomplete tonight would stop the clock.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Hane?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Mr. Daschner?
Yes.
Mrs. Engelhardt?
Yes.
Yes. I'm sorry. Budney?
Abstain.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
And Mr. Hill? Mr. Hill, you probably would abstain, right, because you weren't at the last.
You're muted, Jim, sorry. He's abstained, he wasn't there, yeah, I got you, okay.
Very good.
Abstain.
No, no, it's all good. Thank you all. Item number six on the agenda, Resolution 2021-11, Application 2020-03, Levy-Roth, Block 21, Lot 25, 91 Main Street, denial of minor site plan use variance and bulk variances. The, it was distributed to the board and I do know, Susan, you had sent a couple of clarifying things out, I want to discuss those, but in order to discuss it, I do need a motion and a second on adopting the resolution, which memorializes the denial. Those who are able to vote and participate are the ones who are able to vote on the application itself. So if you were not participating in 91 Main Street, I'm going to need you to just hold tight for a second. So can I get a motion in a second for the resolution?
So move Cook.
Second, Hane.
Thank you. So, Susan, you did have a few notes in here and I rather, because that did not get out to the full board, but I did, Cara did get them, so you've got the text of them. Could you walk through your notes there just for everyone?
And frankly, I didn't, you know, I think I made it clear in my email to Cara. I don't necessarily know if any of these are significant. There was only one typo, so I don't necessarily know if it's something that needs to be changed, but most of them were just clarifying. And.
I just wanted to say, yes, Susan, if you could go through those with me, because I had a person that ended very late today, so I unfortunately haven't seen your email, so walk me through.
Yeah, and I was traveling, so I didn't get to see them till this morning, so I sent that morning, okay. And unfortunately, I don't have the resolution in front of me, so I can't tell you exactly which paragraph is which, so I'm just going to kind of go through. The paragraph that starts with "The front building will maintain its aesthetic appearance."
All right, so give me a second, I do have it in front of me.
Maybe someone can reference what number paragraph that is.
Well, okay, so the top of page five, the very first paragraph, first sentence.
Yeah, let's see, one, two, the third sentence in, it says, "The building envelope of the front building would be extended five feet to the rear and the height would be increased in order to provide better floor plans for the residential units." I had my notes in there to you said, "It will be increased by approximately two and a half feet," which is what they had testified to, which changes the angle of the existing roof. So I think because it's a historic elevation, we might want to note that it took a while to figure that out in their testimony, but once we did figure it out, what they were doing, that should probably be made clear.
That's fine, so by approximately 2.5 feet, which will change the, and can you give me the rest of that?
Which changes the angle of the existing roof.
Okay. Okay, I'm fine with that.
Only because it's the historic structure, I think that that needs to be noted in case there's some sort of question there coming back. And then later on, it says, "The front building will be designed to meet zero energy standards with a covered entrance." It's in that same paragraph there.
It's the next sentence, it right.
Right, right. They corrected during the testimony that both the front and the rear buildings were proposed to be net zero, if I'm not mistaken.
That sentence says, "The front building will be designed to meet net zero." I don't know if the word net made it in there.
Yeah, I'm not sure if it did either. I did a copy paste and sent it to her, so I'm not sure if that was me or on the resolution itself.
All right, so that will be amended to read, "The front and rear buildings would be designed to meet net zero energy standards with a covered entrance at the rear facade of the front building that will be connected to the raised deck."
Yeah, yeah, all that was, is part of your words already. Again, only because I think, I think what I got, the impression was, a lot of this description was lifted right from their application. And I think their original application said the front building would be net zero. And then once we went through the process, we had questioned at one point, is it one? Is it both? And then they said, no, it's both. So I think, and it's referencing that the whole building will be net zero later in your description, so this was kind of a conflict with something, some of the narrative later, I think.
Perfect.
Okay, the next thing I had was, "The paragraph that starts with 'The rear building will be renovated by moving the existing roof, adding a third story,' and you wrote offsetting?" I don't want to say you did, I think that was taken from their original description.
Yep, and that's the following, that's the following paragraph, right after the one we were just talking about.
I believe so, yeah. So I think it's not, the word offsetting is what I think needs to be clarified, because they had testified that the existing rear wall is being demolished and the new back wall will be offset three feet from the rear property line. So I think that just needs to be made clear that they're not offsetting the existing wall, they're demolishing the existing rear wall and then building a new, well, they propose to build a new wall, offset three feet from the rear property line. Again, I don't know if this is, these are big deal things or little deal things, Cara, that, so I don't want to.
Well, no, because the narrative in that paragraph describes the proposed renovations of the rear building, which includes the demolition of a rear wall. And I think that that, that's why I agree with you, Susan, that it needs to be.
Okay, I don't want to, I don't want to feel, I don't want anybody to feel like I'm being nitpicky, I just want to make sure that it's clear.
Susan, please, I take no pride of authorship, this is everybody's resolution, so I welcome the changes. So what I'm going to put there is, "The rear building will be renovated by removing the existing roof, comma, adding a third story, comma, and removing the back wall of the building," I'm sorry.
Or demolishing the back wall, because that's what they're doing.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Or you could use the word demolish or remove, it's up to you.
Okay, I, let's use demolish, okay. Adding a third story, demolishing the back wall of the building and reconstructing it three feet from the rear property line.
Yep, and then the rest of it is fine.
Yeah, everything else is fine there. There was a note, let's see, the next, the next note I had was, again, minor, "The rotary parking carousel would hold eight SUV-sized vehicles," that paragraph.
Yep, so that is one, two, three, four, five paragraphs down from where we just were.
Okay, so everybody's following along, thank you. They also, they testified that there is no garage door on the carousel and I think there was, and the reason why I added that was because there's a lot of talk in that paragraph about how the parking carousel is fully enclosed, fully enclosed, but there's actually, there was actually no garage door proposed on the carousel, on that, on that enclosure. Again, it took, there was actually two, there were two different conflicting exhibits. One had a door and one didn't, and we did finally get that clarification from them. So I don't know if that's something we should add or not to that paragraph.
So let's say, "The carousel would be housed inside a building without a, without a front door, without a front."
Without a garage door. Or you could just tack on to the end of the paragraph, you know, no garage doors was proposed.
What's that Todd cut?
It's still, I don't know, you guys do, it's still fully enclosed. I mean, fully, you're not going to say fully enclosed means all four walls and you can't get in it. The idea there was that the structure would be fully enclosed within a building.
Well.
Not a garage door, it's not, because you.
Yeah, there's a two-hour rated wall that they were proposing on all four sides, so if you don't have a garage door that's two-hour rated, then in fact, it's not a two-hour rated structure. So I just, like, again, it was something that we went, went back and forth with, and then when we did get clarification, I just want to make sure that it's clear. But.
Yeah, Cara, do you think that needs to be included or not?
I mean, I certainly think it doesn't hurt. It's not going to take away from anything. I think that if we say housed inside a building, I think that does make it clear, but I have no problem adding housed inside a building without a garage door to limit noise or protect it from. I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't hurt at all.
That's fine, that's fine. Okay, Susan, and then you've got.
Let's see, the paragraph that starts with, that has parking spaces would be assigned to the tenants and restrictions.
That's the following paragraph.
Right, they actually had testified that tenants could park as far as the courthouse parking, which is a good three blocks away, not two. So again, really minor stuff here, I don't.
You want to just change two to three, you're saying?
I think that's, I think that's appropriate.
That's fine.
And then this is the typo, the paragraph that says, "The proposed stormwater management design should be altered based on the results of the soil testing." There's.
Is that how the paragraph starts out, Susan?
No, it does not start out that way. Let's see, although not documented, it says "the Ingram," testified. Just.
So if everyone's, or for anyone that is following, it's the second paragraph on page six, about the third line down, although not documented, so go ahead. They take the E, yep.
It's just, either put mister, either change the to mister or pick out the.
There's no honorifics, it's always.
All right, and then, let's see, access, and then later on, again, the paragraph does not start with this, but it says, "Access to and from the property should not be provided." I'm sorry.
One, two, three paragraphs down from there about the middle of that paragraph.
This is the last thing. And again, this is something that I don't, I don't know if is appropriate for the resolution or not. It says, "Access to and from the property could not be provided by way of Court Street and any disturbance to the sidewalk adjacent to the property would be replaced in kind in accordance with the Borough Streetscape Project." I think what I wrote here to you was, should there be any mention in that, later on in the resolution, in the arguments section, that documents what some of our concerns were? In the later paragraphs, that the board had expressed concern for avoiding the Streetscape Project funding, because the applicant, I don't recall the applicant presenting how they would avoid the sidewalk disruption, but I don't know how, how or if that's appropriate for the resolution or not.
Well, you could argue that it's a detriment to, and when we're talking about the negative criteria in terms of detriment to the public good on the proofs, you know, it could, you know, applicant failed to provide testimony as to how alterations, alterations in utility access could be provided without disturbing the Streetscape Project, which could potentially put the borough at a financial liability or something like that. You could put that in, but I don't know if we need it or not.
I know that a couple of the board members specifically had those concerns and we had touched upon other arguments, and I just want to make sure that they're memorialized, because frankly, we might have to deal with this on another applicant along the Streetscape, so we want to make, I want to make sure that it's at least documented how this board handled it or discussed it appropriately. But again, I don't know if that's appropriate for this resolution.
Because it was something we talked about and it should probably be written down someplace, I agree with you. I don't know, Cara, if you've got a better place to put it, other than in the detriment to the public good idea that the borough would be, could potentially be liable for millions of dollars if, you know, if the Streetscape was disturbed and the applicant made no testimony as to what they were going to do.
Yep. So I'm looking at, I guess it's page 11. Because what I'll do, what I can do is, page 11, one paragraph, starts out with paragraph B and then there's three underneath it, and then one, two, three, four under that, we talked about the board also defined as an ancillary point, that if a grant is, the D1 use variance is requested, the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance would be substantially impaired. I think I can put it in there.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I can put it in there, so I'll do a, in addition.
I just, I think we should make sure we're careful not to say they, you know, because they didn't provide any testimony that, you know, for proof, but we expressed it concerns. I just don't want them, I don't want, I don't want to be assumption that, that, that we assumed that the grant would be invalid, you know?
The problem was, they provided testimony saying that they would tunnel under Main
Exactly, but no solution to that problem.
That is expressly prohibited.
Yeah.
By Borough Ordinance.
And that's why I think we should probably throw that in the resolution somewhere to document that. Again, I'm really sorry that I didn't get this back to you guys before this morning.
No, it's okay, and I think that putting this in here, because you're right, that it was a concern of a number of us on the board and was also, it also may affect other things. And I'm going to be, I'm going to be honest with you, is that, you know, we've denied approvals, the, assuming that this resolution is adopted and it's memorialized, the applicant has rights for appeal, and if they want, if they exercise them, we want to make sure that our resolution is complete and accurate.
It's so unusual for this board to deny an application, I want to make sure it's done right. I appreciate your time and patience with me.
It's all good, it's important. Cara, do you have what you need?
Almost. Streetscape. And the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance and impact on.
Okay, so, in addition, comma, "The board was concerned about the applicant's plan to tunnel below Main Street in connection with the project for utility installation, for utility installation, which is prohibited by law, which is prohibited by law, comma, would impact the Streetscape Project, the Borough Streetscape Project, and the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance and impact the public good." In addition, comma, "The board was concerned about the applicant's plan to tunnel below Main Street in connection with the project for, for the installation of utilities, which is prohibited by law, comma, would impact the Borough Streetscape Project and, and as well as the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance and would impact the public good."
I think that, does that, yeah, is that, yeah, I think that does it. Anybody else have other comments or questions about the resolution? So if I'm remembering correctly, Eileen, Todd moved and Mark seconded.
That's correct, and those eligible to vote on this resolution are you, Susan, Todd, Brian, Mark, and Karen.
So let me, let me just make sure, Todd, with those amendments from Susan, you find them friendly to your motion?
Yes.
And Mark, you're okay with them?
Yeah.
All right, so is there any further discussion? Okay, call the roll, please.
Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Hane?
Yes.
Mr. Daschner?
Yes.
Mrs. Engelhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Budney?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you all. Item seven on the agenda is Resolution 2021-12, in conjunction, excuse me, with Premier Outdoor Media LLC. Cara, is that ready yet or no?
It's not, I spoke with council this morning, I told them it will be distributed within the next couple of days to everyone for review, and then we'll have it on the next board meeting.
Okay, so we will move on from that item on the agenda. We are now at eight chair items. I want to thank everybody for logging in on a hot summer day and make sure you stay hydrated. And, thank you, Brian. We, there's, there's, there's a couple of things coming up. Our next meeting, so not only will we have hopefully the resolution associated with memorializing Premier Outdoor Media, we are, as we mentioned last week, going to have the presentation from Beth McManus on the findings of the investigation for Liberty Village area need to redevelopment. on the findings of the investigation for Liberty Village area need to redevelopment. Everyone should have gotten, um, that preliminary, uh, report, you know, already by email. It's being made, it's available now to the public, notice is being taken care of. Um, that's, that's, that's the, the bulk of our, I will be honest with you, that's going to occupy a chunk of time at our next meeting. Uh, because it is a public hearing and folks, um, in the public, um, do, you know, will, will be able to participate uh, in that as well. And as, as we have already previously announced, that will be a virtual meeting. Um, I do not see any trend in the numbers suggesting that we are returning to in person anytime soon. Um, will, a, a, and, and to be, to put a fine point on it, I do not think our meeting on, um, the twenty eighth of September, uh, will be, um, in person. I, I just don't see that happening before that, especially if there's notice and things like that. I, um, just, you know, just, just so everyone's kind of, you know, keeping that in the back of their mind. Zoom is fun, Zoom is fine. Um, I will say, just so everybody knows, um, I am unable to be at the meeting on the twenty eighth. Susan, you're going to have to chair, but right now there's nothing on the agenda.
I, I, I already have it on my calendar.
So, um, so that's that. I don't think there's anything coming down on the twenty eighth that I know of, but we'll, we'll, we'll see. Um, and um, that was, that was that, um, Eileen, there's, we haven't heard anything from Patavani, right? We don't know when that's coming in.
No, I talked to, uh, Steve Brumberg, uh, he did give us an extension of time to act, um, since that was deemed complete. They are still working with their engineer to revise the plan.
Alright, and so, and so that's still out there, and obviously, uh, Captiva is going to come back again at some point for completeness, we just don't know when. Um, I, I would say, hopefully, we can of, i- if, if, if it needs, if, you know, completeness needs to happen for Captiva on, at the next meeting, we can do that. Um, I do want to make sure that we've got adequate time in the, uh, on the meeting on the fourteenth for Liberty Village, because it is going to occupy some some time, and I don't want to have too, I don't want to have too much going on the agenda, because, because correctly, I got yelled at uh, for, for letting the meetings run too long. So we're going to try to, try to balance this out a little bit better, so, um, uh, that's, that's coming up. The other thing, um, that I, that, that Jeremy mentioned before had to do with the, um, this, um, uh, review of a zoning question. And so let me, let me get into this just real fast. There is, the, there is, there appears that there may be an inconsistency, and I say maybe, because we don't know, we have to look at this. Between what is on the ground, what is in, what is on the map, what is and what, what intent was, uh, for, um, um, for zoning. So we, we don't, we, we have to look at it. I mean, there's, there's, like, there's no, there's no, I'm not, I'm not making any assessment here at this point. The property we're talking about, which is block, uh, which is lot eight in block twenty eight, um, is, it has frontage on Emery Avenue, very, uh, very close to Route thirty one and the municipal boundary. And what, if you drove past it on Emery, the question is the driveway access that fronts Emery and then goes to the rear of what is whatever, whatever, whatever industrial park, I forgot what it's, what name is on the on the, on the signage, um, whether or not, um, that is intended to be zoned single family, as it appears it might be on the map, whether it is actually connected to the rest of of block, of lot eight, which is the TC zone, the Transitional Commercial Zone, we have to do some looking. Beth has been aware, made aware of this, um, uh, when it was raised, uh, by the property owner to counsel. Um, so Beth knows what's going on. I did not feel the need to bring her into the meeting just for this. Uh, what she and I agreed to was, I need one or two volunteers from the planning board to work with Beth, do a little bit of an investigation and figure out what's going on here, maybe looking back at past site plans, prior approvals, historical documents. It's not a hard thing to do, but rather than just have Beth do it entirely, I thought it'd be useful to have a, one or two folks from the board work with her on this and hopefully report back at the next meeting. I kind of don't want to let this go on too long if we don't have to. Um, we want to be able to give the property owner an answer to their question. Um, obviously, they're thinking about something because, um, they, they went to Jeff Klein asking about zoning and building permit questions, and this is when it became, this is when the, this inconsistency became apparent, so. Um, uh.
Well, Jeff, it was, I, I, I'd be happy to volunteer, because I remember all of it. I mean, there, they started to build a sign. They started to build a sign at the entrance, but the sign theoretically is on a single family. The only thing on that property is the sign and a driveway.
Right.
So, because I was confused too when I looked at it, because it sort of sticks right through, as if you took a house out and put a driveway in, but that's not.
And that's not what happened, and, and if you, and again, I'm not, I can not delitigate it now, but if you look at a tax map, tax map, I, which I know is not to be used for zoning purposes, but the tax map suggests that it is one parcel, but you're right, maybe it was two parcels, maybe the lots got merged. This is why we have to do a little digging and figure out what's going on here. So Todd, I'm gonna, Todd, you're good. Is there anybody else who wants to work on this?
I don't mind not working on it, but I, especially because Todd knows the history of that, of that parcel. Um, and I'll just remind Todd, and as you're speaking to, you know, and working with Beth, um, that, um, if you recall, there's an overlay on that site. Um, we dealt, we, we put an overlay on that site specifically for mixed use and had seen it as a possibility for um, resident, multifamily residential as well in the future, as, just as an overlay, not to change the existing zoning. But that, I think, that consideration and the fact that you don't have to have a zoning line in the middle of a street. In fact, you know, a lot of planners think that it's best to be in the middle of the block. I think that, if I recall, I think that was one of the other pieces of history, when we were doing the master plan back in two thousand and ten. So I don't know what happened here, but I, is, I think if Todd is on it, I think I'd like to see Jeff, I wouldn't mind seeing one of the newer members of the, of the board on this too, so that they can have this experience of kind of going through this process. So we have some, some gray and some, some not so gray members of the board that are, you know, kind of get this experience.
Right in and, and, and. Um, is there anybody else who wants to, to, to work with Todd on this? Karen, who's saying I am not old, is, is, is volunteering, so that's fine, right?
Well, I just had my gray, it's kind of merged in, so I don't know if that counts.
I don't mean that, I don't mean this gray, I mean new, younger, new, new to the board.
Alright, so I will tell, I'll tell Beth that Todd and Karen, um, are going to work with her and we'll just just to figure out what's going on here and report back to the board at the next meeting. Again, we want to be able to give the property owner some clear information. And if, and, and, or, and just very clear, if, if we need to make a change in, in something, if, if, if if there's an inconsistency and it requires council to take action, um, to clarify this, you know, that's why Jeremy, I told you to hang out till this part of the meeting, um, there may, the council may have to take some action. Um, if there's a question of, 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 of a minor change to the land ordinance, like that, that, I, I don't know, we have to just yeah, clearly, we don't want to have an applicant have to come in and get variances if it's just a coloring error on a map, right? We want to, we want to be, but I, but it's more than just, it's more than just a coloring error. I think it's more complicated than that, so.
I don't think it is an error necessarily. I, I, I really don't, and I think we need to be very careful to assume that.
Right, so that's, so that's that, and, um, so thank you both for stepping up to help with that. Um, and then just to, as, as was said before, in terms of master plan, um, I'm going to be working with Beth to, and the mayor, and Jeremy, you'll get looped in here too. We're going to write a letter to Mark Salic, Conning County Economic Development, requesting grant funding to help support master plan work. And at the same time, we're going to have, um, Bill Hans work on the, uh, ordinance resolution language the council needs to get the funding done. We're going to work on those together. Um, so hopefully that gets done, um, sooner than later. I know it's been a long time coming, but, um, that's where that is. And other than that, I don't have anything else under chair items. Does anybody have anything? Alright, bills were circulated, um, do I have a motion to audit the bills?
I make a motion, we audit the bills.
Thank you.
Uh, any further discussion on the bills, questions? Eileen?
Uh, Mr. Cook?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Campion?
Yes.
Mr. Doxton?
Yes.
Mrs. Engelhardt?
Yes.
Mr. Bettany?
Yes.
Mr. Haynes?
Yes.
Ms. Giffen?
Yes.
Mr. Norton?
Yes.
Thank you. Professional reports, Kara, do you have anything?
Unfortunately, I have nothing else further to report after my last report, so, uh, maybe we'll try again at the next meeting.
Alright, um, our planner and engineer and traffic engineer are, are not here today, so, um, that's that, and we do not need to go to executive session. Alright, so I believe our business having been conducted will do adjourn in a second. I will say that, uh, it is seven forty-two. I'm still trying to make up for the one AM. I'm never going to get there, but I'm tripping at it uh, over, over time here. And, um, I believe our in-town brewery is open until ten PM tonight. Um, I'm just, if anyone happens to hear about that detail, I'm after the meeting, I'm just.
I'm so bummed.
Me too.
I can't go, but I'm going to go jump in the pool.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Granted.
Hi.
Alright, thank you all, I'll see you in a couple of weeks.
Bye, everybody, take care.
Be careful.